Oh, we are live.
Good evening and thank you for joining us. I would like to call tonight's meeting to order. For the record, we need to take attendance, so I'll ask our recording secretary, Katie Siegel, to call the roll.
Jones?
Here.
Corman?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Stefani?
Here.
Baumstark?
Here.
Hegi?
Here.
Hectorowitz?
Yeah. All right, thank you, Katie. Before we proceed, I would like to take just a moment to acknowledge the tragic loss of two members of our District 34 family this week. A week ago Saturday, Glen Grove 5th grader Nyla Vernon passed away unexpectedly. And just this morning, longtime Westbrook associate Holly Lealios passed away after an extended illness. All of us extend our condolences to their families and loved ones. We are keeping all of you in our thoughts and in our hearts. Nyla and Holly will be deeply missed. Now we must proceed with our meeting. The sole focus of tonight's special meeting is the awarding and assigning of trade contracts for Phase 1 summer construction work on our referendum projects. To help us wade through the contracts, we are joined by several members of our administrative team, including Superintendent Dr. Dane Delly, Assistant Superintendent for Business Services Eric Miller, Director of Operations Steve Ruelle, Director of Communications and Strategic Planning Kathy Kajigian, and our Board Recording Secretary Katie Siegel. We also have with us tonight Dave Torres from Nicholas and Associates, and Ron Richardson, and Troy Kerr from FGM Architects. Before we begin our discussion, we have just a little bit of business to take care of, and that brings us to our first item on the agenda, which is approvals. We have two items for approval tonight. The first is approval of tonight's agenda. Board may have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
No move, Mike Corman.
Second, Jim Baumstark.
This is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next may I have a motion and second to approve the March 15, 2021 regular meeting and executive session minutes.
So move, John Hegi.
Second, thanks Stefani.
Again, this is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We now come to the communications portion of our agenda, and we usually have superintendent comments at this time. So Dr. Delly, do you have anything you would like to say?
Thank you, Natalie. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick comment, I guess particularly for those who are maybe dialing into our meeting. And while the topic for some may seem a bit mundane, it really does represent yet another milestone in this journey that we're taking to make wide-scale improvements across the entire school district. And there has been quite a bit of work that has gone into this, but also like to just take a moment to acknowledge the participation of Mike Corman and John Hegi as subcommittee members as part of this larger team that we have assembled, and to all the representatives that we have this evening as we bring forward these contracts for your consideration. So thank you to all. And Eric will have some more introductions when we get to the agenda. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Delly. And although this is a special meeting to discuss one particular subject, we still make time for public input. So we are at the first of two opportunities for audience comments. Anyone wishing to address the board can submit their comments using a link found on our website. Our Director of Communications Kathy Kajigian will read your name and your connection to the district, and then bring you on screen. Please make sure your full name is visible on the Zoom so that she may be able to find you. As always, we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, and you will get a 30-second warning. And then we will have to move on to the next speaker. Please know that the board will be taking note of all comments, but we will not be responding because we will be in listening mode only. The board administration will follow up with an appropriate answer in a timely manner. We ask that you register one comment per opportunity given, and we ask that you conduct yourselves with respect and civility as outlined in Board Policy Section 2, Subsection 230, and Section 8, Subsection 30. Kathy, is there anyone wishing to make a comment at this time?
There are no requests for comments.
All right, then we will move along. Next on our agenda is consideration of other resolutions, and it brings us to the reason for our meeting tonight. We have only one resolution to consider, and that is 2161, Approval of Resolution Awarding and Assigning Trade Contracts for the 2021 Referendum Work additions and remodeling work at multiple sites. And I'm going to hand it over to Eric Miller to kick us off.
Great, thank you. So first and foremost, this is just an exciting night. You know, this is years of work in progress, both from a design standpoint with FGM, who sat there, meeting after meeting after meeting, listening to staff, getting their input, trying to gather everything that the members of the district and stakeholders might possibly want, helped us whittle it down to this great package that I think we can all feel good about, accomplishes all the goals we set out for at the beginning of this referendum. You know, who gave it, handed off to Nicholas, Dave Torres, who took that, estimated that, you know, worked it on the streets, so to speak. And tonight we've got a great set of results that we're very happy to share with you for your consideration tonight. And so it's a great time. And I'll just set us up in that there are sort of three components to what we're asking approval for tonight. One, it's a resolution that sort of allows for us to move forward. And it also allows for the board to award contracts, and then turn them back over to Nicholas, who assumes the risk, and will then sort of, you know, take over for that, take over the process from that standpoint, where they work with the subs, they get the billing, they send the bills back up to me and Steve, and you see the results on your monthly referendum expense report that we put in the board packet. So you've got the resolution. You've got 17 assignment letters for each of the different trade contractors. And then now that we know what the work looks like, we've updated the project authorization exhibit for Nicholas because now we know more of the specifics for the work that's to come. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Dave to walk us through the results from the bid and sort of help contextualize the results from what we had thought prior to going out to bid. So with that, Dave, I'll let you take over and share your screen if you'd like.
Great, thanks, Eric. I'm going to go ahead and give it a shot here. Oops, that's the wrong one. Hold on. Let's try again. Still seems to be pulling the wrong screen. Let's see if I drag it over. Are you guys seeing a project recap sheet?
Yes. Yeah.
Some saying yes, Kathy shaking no.
This is your letter.
Shows the bid packages and the total.
David, it's not the one-pager, though, that we had spoken about.
For some reason, here, let me drag it back over then. We'll try again.
Three of 18.
How about this one? How about this now?
Same, same document.
Maybe go to page one.
What is going on here? Love technology. Let me try this one more time. Hold on. This is it? Okay. All right. Well, I won't take up too much of your time, but I really want to focus on just this single document. As Eric and Dane, Dr. Delly already just kind of explained, this is a real big milestone for us, and there's a lot of just excitement in our office amongst the contractors. We are ready to hit the ground running here. But basically, just to kind of run you through the process, you know, we went through several rounds of estimates, as Eric mentioned. And, you know, at the last board meeting, the last budget presentation meeting, I kind of presented you all with an all-in total project recap number of about $70,105,834. And again, that was your all-in estimate based off of, you know, your bidding totals, your hard costs, CM fees, GCs, all of our allowances for furniture, casework, technology, our A&E professional fees. So basically, what you guys are looking at tonight, you've got our bidding totals, which are our hard numbers. So that's what physically contractors bid out. That's the $52,966,274. Now, that total does include a series of alternates, ad alternates, that as a group, we internally discussed as being beneficial at this time for the district to proceed with, based on just the totals in terms of where we came in at. The base bid itself actually came in around $52,318,000. So there's about a $650,000 premium for those alternates, those ad alternates, which include the additional classroom at Lion, some of those outdoor classroom learning environments that we discussed. And then, as well as some additional storm water detention at Westbrook. And
The two extra, I'll say extra, but they were deducts. It's the two extra rooms at Westbrook that are included in this number as well, right?
Correct. So the, those were set up in the project as deductive alternates. So the base bid included those two, the pre-K, as well as the OTPT spaces. And so both of those were included in that 52.3 number. So
It always got confusing to me about deducts and alternates. But for the board, the bids came in such that we were able to kind of get everything we were looking to put out to bid and get numbers for.
Correct. So given where that number came in at, we went ahead and added those additional alternates, as I said, kind of based on our internal discussions, which brought us to that $52,966,274. Now, on top of that, I'll just kind of go line by line here. And at the end, we can go through any questions that you might have. So our CM fees, our GCs, bond and insurance. So our CM fee is based off of a percentage that's really, that's more of that 3.75%. That's our overhead and profit that covers our admin, our project assistance, our accounting, et cetera. And then we also have our fixed general conditions, and that's our project supervision. So that's our time for project managers. That's our time for our onsite superintendents, as well as our safety directors or our safety audits. So we've got a dedicated superintendent for every school. So there are four superintendents that are going to be onsite on a day-to-day basis at each school during the duration of the project, and we have two project managers. The way that it was bid was kind of two schools each. So we've assigned a project manager to each base bid. And then we've budgeted for, you know, a series of safety audits. Typically, it's a weekly safety audit, just to make sure that everyone is being safe and that way we can track and record any instances or prevent anything from happening on the safety front. From there, our bond and insurance is kind of a fixed rate. We've got typically about a 1% bond, and that's again, part of us being at risk. And then our insurance is at about 0.69%. The district has requested that we procure builder's risk. So I did carry an allowance there of $70,000, and that's based off of some feedback that we've gotten from our insurance carriers. And so that's a very accurate number.
Dave, just in case we've never mentioned this before, this is insurance while the project is in progress. So if a storm came by and destroyed some of the work, we've got coverage for it, which is nice because if you don't, something like that happens, you're just out of luck. So we've asked Nicholas to go ahead and carry that for us.
Yep. So that really brings us to, you know, our total construction cost. And then below that line, I've got a general reimbursable conditions budget of 1.8 million. Now, that's a significant number, so I want to unpack that a little bit for you. As part of each project, we carry a budget for these general reimbursable, which if you remember, when I went back through kind of our estimating phase, just a couple of the different allowances that we carry on an as-needed basis. So this covers cost for construction trailers at each site, our temporary toilets, all of the dumpsters that we're going to have onsite, material testing for soils, compaction, all of our called inspections that will take place throughout the course of construction, both interior and exterior. That includes survey and layout from professionals, surveyors, our printing costs, general cleanup. I do have allowances in there for winter conditions, signage and barricades, temporary fencing. That was an exercise that we went through, which each of the schools, as we kind of brought the staff up to speed, was giving them an idea of what, you know, the sites were going to look like as far as how we were going to use them, what our temporary conditions were going to be with fencing and trailers and things like that. So that covers those type of costs. I'm carrying allowances for utilities and temporary power. It's been my experience, anytime we're dealing with NICOR and/or COMED, it's a wild card, and we may need to get temporary power onsite. And that's not cheap. So we do have allowances carried for that, as well as any additional temporary haul roads, miscellaneous restoration, et cetera. Now, the important thing is that this $1.8 million is not set in stone. This is only as used. So this is, these are things that, as they're needed, they're pass-through costs without any markup. So that's the value that we're carrying there, just so you understand what's included. The abatement piece, since we are, for the most part, dealing with new construction here, there's not going to be a huge investment, but we did get some investigation work done this past spring break, and we are awaiting a report for a potential abatement project that will need to take place at Springman when we tear down the gym. So we are currently awaiting feedback from the environmental consultant. So I've got a TBD in there right now, but again, nothing astronomical that we're expecting at this point. Our furniture and mobile casework allowance, technology allowances, these are allowances that were generated by FGM along with Brian and those in the district. So we're carrying those allowances kind of separate below the line. And then I've also carried a separate allowance for the professional fees from FGM, Civil, et cetera. And that brings us to our total project cost of $65,627,591. And again, all those costs do include, even up at the top, that construction value includes the 5% construction contingency that we maintained during the last 95% estimate. And yeah, I mean, really, that kind of sums up where we're at. So we're, you know, we're just shy of about 4.5 million under where we had budgeted at the 95% level, which is very encouraging. From a bidding standpoint, I mean, we had a great turnout, about 55 bidders across the board. The scope review process was one of the smoothest that I've been through. Great contractors, everyone's excited, everyone's hungry, everyone's ready to get going. So we're very excited. We just need to get through this last permitting piece so that we can get out there as soon as we can. So with that, I mean, if there's any questions, I'd love to open it up and answer anything I can for you.
Who wants to go first?
Scott's raising his hand.
Dave, I just want to know, you know, there's a multiple list of contractors here. Have you worked with all these people before in the past?
Yeah, let me pull that, let me pull that up here.
A number of them have been onsite.
Yes, there's several that have already worked in the district. And as I look through the list here, I have personally worked with everyone except for one of them, but they're currently doing another job with another PM in our firm, actually at Lincoln School in Skokie 69. So yes.
I have a question. Sorry, you can't see me raising my hand because I'm having video difficulties.
Go ahead.
I don't know if this is a question for Eric or Dave, but could you talk a little bit about that lowest responsible bidder process and what it is we do to just make sure? Like if someone came in and said, "Show me that you did that," what do we show them? You know, that we've awarded contracts to the lowest responsible bidder?
Yeah, I could, you want me to just jump in on this one? So basically, I mean, we held a public bid, so everyone was able to, you know, understand where the numbers were. And the next step in that process, before we get to this point, is to conduct scope reviews. So basically, I look at whoever's bid came in the lowest, and then we walk through the scope of work. I created 11 different bid packages for these projects. One, and each one of those items, it's like a checklist. So I go through with, you know, bid package one contractors. And sometimes, you know, you had one bidder who was low on both base bids, and sometimes there was a split, and you had two different contractors, which is why sometimes you see a single award versus two awards. And so as you go through the scope, provided that everything is included, at that point, we've done our due diligence to say, you know, basically, when you sign this contract, you're agreeing to the entire scope of work and that you intend to perform everything that is in those contract documents as specified. So that completes that process and thus makes them the low responsible bidder.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, can I just ask you a quick question about the actual documents of like the assignment? And I think there's like an amendment. Has our district attorney vetted those documents?
Yeah, we're using Carrie Pfeifel from Hodges, I believe. And she's been working with all the gentlemen you see on screen here on their master contracts, project authorization. Yeah, she oversees all of our construction legal documentation. So yes.
Okay, thank you. Who else has a question? I can't see everybody right now.
I do, Natalie. Okay, go ahead. This more not construction really related, but obviously with the number of contractors and individuals that are going to be coming into all of the schools, are all of the individuals' background checked through? The, how does that work? Just for safety and security?
Great question. Great question. I'll jump right in unless Steve wants to.
Yeah, so we require federal and state background checks for every employee that's going to be on our property. So what the contractors do, they send over a list of employees that they're going to send to get fingerprinted, excuse me. They go get fingerprinted, and there's a state and federal report that's sent to the HR department here, and they go through it. And then, along with myself, we review every background check that comes through. Once everybody passes, they're going to be handed a Nicholas hard hat sticker. They're going to be required to wear hard hats with these stickers on them, and that's the only people that are going to be on our property. If you don't have a sticker, you can't come on our property.
And it's not required, but we think it's a bonus just to keep everyone have peace of mind and know that.
Absolutely.
It's a good idea.
All right, thanks, Katie, for that question. Anybody else? Mike, I know you have something you want to ask about.
So a couple of things for Dave, but also for Ron. So I went through all the documents over the last, from I guess what, the 18th, we got the first letter. Dave, can you talk, I ran into Katie Jones today at the Village Hall when I was going to the polling place, and we were discussing the contingency fees. And obviously, when we started this process, we were at 7 plus 7, 14%. Then we dropped to 5 plus 5. I still see the 5%, at least based on what I read, that comes to about 3.2 million. So I guess this is a dual question for Dave and for Ron. Just trying to understand where that contingency lies. I understand wanting to have a contingency, I really do. But we've already seen some benefit in being more conservative than not. And I just want to see if either Ron's number is or can be adjusted or whether the Nicholas number is or can be adjusted or should be.
So basically, we, I mean, I'm not carrying a design contingency anymore. So that goes away between the 95% and the actual out-to-bid. So at 95%, I think I was at about 1.5% on the design side, so that's gone now. And then, you know, the 5% is, it's around there. So I carried basically an allowance per bid package per school. And, you know, I had kind of run that out to be close to about, you know, about 2.4 million in actual dollar construction contingencies with a few other items in there for like undercuts and things like that that wouldn't necessarily be inclusive of that number. But ballpark, you know, between 2.5 and 3 million is about where we sit.
Okay. And I think you covered the drawdowns on the reimbursables. That's not a blanket amount of money that you're getting. That's
Correct.
You know, as a dumpster gets pulled, there's a fee that's paid. That's a direct pass-through. I think that's important for the community to know. I think it was inevitable that I was going to come back to stormwater, but just something to consider. We had talked in our design meetings with Board Member Hegi and with the design team about upsizing the capacity of some of our stormwater solutions. It might be worthwhile to at least explore that opportunity with the Village of Glenview, possibly the IEPA and the US EPA for potential grant opportunities to cost share that. So I'd like to at least explore that a little bit with Eric. And I think it would be a good faith effort with the community here in Glenview, where we do have some significant stormwater compliance issues kind of throughout the village. So I'll just throw that in for the good of the order, I suppose. The Appearance Commission meeting obviously went very well last Wednesday night. Steve, I'll count on you to make sure that our neighbors at Westbrook are well taken care of and that we do everything right by them. Just worth saying. Question on, so let me go back to builder's risk. For Eric, have we gone back to our insurer to make sure that we have either de-conflicted or make sure we're not providing double coverage? Are they both aware of each other in terms of the builder's risk policy and a general risk policy? Yes, they know. And this is Skip. And, you know, Carrie Pfeifel says either go to Skip and get an additional policy, or Dave can carry it and just, you know, no upcharge, sort of pass it through. I always felt like it was easiest than using the CM at risk to have them carry it. But we are not, we do not have double coverage. Great. Just wanted to make sure we were connected. And then the last thing, the furniture and technology amounts, obviously, are, I think, naturally lower than what we would ultimately expect, which I think will be, next year's numbers will be much higher. Just out of curiosity, these, it seems to be around 500,000. I guess it's more like 9, 850,000. What are those costs, you know, broadly for? In my mind, technology would be wiring and kind of, kind of big bucket items to make sure that our buildings are ready. But what kind of furniture are we buying in the next 12 months? You know, that kind of accounts for this number? Do we think? Do we know or do we think?
Yeah, Mike, that's to fit out all of the classrooms, and Troy, you can jump in here, too. It's for all, because remember, for the most part, a lot of the storage in the classrooms are mobile. And so therefore, we're going with a furniture vendor rather than cabinet builder, you know, on the construction side. So that's what's really goose-ing that up. And there are quite a few classrooms. This is all of the classrooms. And then, you know, we haven't quite had this discussion yet, but we're going to be talking soon about fusing those furniture packages with our work for next summer. So perhaps we can get an economy of scale if we go out for a much larger package across the board. So that's another discussion we're going to have.
So that's great. Thank you, Ron, for that. And so Dave, one last question. Where did we, based on our most recent number, where did we expect to be today?
So that was the $70 million number that I presented back in January. That was kind of our all-in based on the 95% control estimate. So that's where I expected us to be. So for us to be, you know, 4.5 under is great.
Yeah, and I just wanted to get that into the community mix. You know, a $4.5 million savings by this entire team is incredible and far better than I could have imagined even a year ago when we started, you know, kind of, not just the referendum, but even not just the referendum, but even eighteen months ago when we were starting to think about scope. So I just want to give a kudos to the entire team for the great work on this. And I hope that that pattern can continue. I think it goes without saying, none of us, all of us would love to be able to say we didn't need all the money. Hopefully, we can get there. I know that rarely happens in government, but let's hope we can work that way and and give our community a good news story here out of our process. Thank you.
Can I just add on to what Mike was saying, that between the bond offering and this new construction savings here, we're probably approaching about fifteen million dollars in savings from the original projection of these costs. So that is tremendous work by the whole administrative team and everyone involved with this project. So thank you.
And Kathy, you got a heck of a headline there.
Very true. Thanks for pointing that out, Mike and Scott. It is tremendously good news at a time when we can really use some good news. So thanks to everybody for their hard work on this. Are there any more questions before I call for a vote?
I do have, this is kind of, this is a little antithetical, but it's the kind of a clarification. Eric, in your opening comments, you is this, I just want to understand a little better. You'd said that, I think, the construction manager Nicholas takes on, you said they take on all the risk, I think, is what I wrote down. What is what exactly is the nature of the risk transfer that occurs with this assignment process? Risks are actually transferred.
So it's it's all the liability associated with completing the project. So for instance, if this board owned each of the contracts, me and Carrie Piper would go after liquidated damages for a contractor who didn't finish on time. You know, the substantial complete. This way, I can say to Dave, hey, Dave, can you go after the plumber who didn't finish the work and and get your lawyers on it and both? And so it's just a matter of keeping Dave on his toes rather than me and Steve.
Is it an administrative thing? Or is it actually, if there's a default by something or like?
Well, so.
What what actually is?
The board is going to hold Nicholas responsible for the work the subs do.
So if it's completely wrong and they have to redo it, who bears that financial risk?
Depending on the situation, because it's can be very tricky. Was the design wrong? Or was it the plumber who installed the pipe the wrong way? But for in general, if the pipe was installed the wrong way, we'd say, Dave, hey, can you address this with the plumber for us?
Which makes the most sense, because Dave's the one who's going to be working closely with them.
Would a slightly different example be, we're we've we've loaded a rooftop unit on top of the skids, but haven't we haven't secured it to the roof. A tornado comes through, takes that unit off the roof and throws it from Hank King to Hoffman and goes through the classroom in the middle of the night. That would be covered under builder's risk of some sort, or water into a building during a downpour while the hatch was left open.
Yes. So for for builder's risk, that's exactly right. But Jim, what you were talking about was having the contract, having a relationship with Nicholas that's at risk.
Right. That that the nature of that particular risk transfer, yeah, between us and the builder and Nicholas, I mean.
Right.
I I look at it as if you're building a house, a general contractors, Dave, and he's out there making sure that everybody's doing the work they're supposed to do. Because that's not my specialty or Eric's specialty. So he doesn't have to go out and hunt the plumber down when he didn't put something in right. That's Dave's job. And he's assuming that risk because he's getting paid to do that.
Right. So we're gonna, you know, basically, if there are issues, you know, if a contractor is failing to perform in any way, shape or form, you know, we're the ones that are going to issue, you know, we'll put them on notice, you know, we'll issue a termination notice. You know, we'll get our legal teams involved, you know, if, God forbid, a contractor goes under. You know, we'll be the one to facilitate that process of calling on, you know, getting a kind of another contractor in to finish what they've started and to take it through that whole legal process. So really, it takes it off of your plate and just keeps it on ours.
Jim, do you feel comfortable?
Well, I mean, but if there's extra, let's say you do have, let's say that that's a good, that bankrupt contractor is a good example. Let's say that, you know, whatever, whatever reason, there's a four million dollar extra expense associated with having to hire a new sub to do the piece. Like, does that bill come to the school or does that get absorbed by you guys?
That would be something that the legal would work out.
But you'd have a bond on that.
Right, right.
So you can pull your subcontractor's bond, or or we would pull your bond.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Everybody feel comfortable? And no more questions or? Okay, I'm seeing heads nodding no.
I thought I saw Diane's hand up, but I don't, I may not have seen that.
I think my questions were answered by all everyone else's questions at this point. So I appreciate it. Thanks, Dane.
Sure.
And now I can see all of you. So, yes, I think I don't see any more hands up. And so I'm going to interpret that to mean that we're ready to vote to approve. And so may I have a motion and a second?
I would like to so move. This is Mike Corman.
I have to read the whole resolution?
Again, I did it again.
It's okay. I think by law, I have to read the the resolution. And it is twenty-one sixty-one, approval of resolution, awarding and assigning trade contracts for twenty-twenty-one referendum work, additions and remodeling work at multiple sites. Now your turn.
I so move that resolution.
Thank you, Mike. Who was that seconding? I'm sorry, I cut you off.
John, come on, second it.
I'll second. Scott Nelson.
All right, we have a second. All right. May I have a roll call? There's a roll call. Hegi.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Baumstark.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Jack Torwitz.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
And Corman.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Dave, Ron and Troy for joining us. We just have a little bit of business to do, so you guys are free to leave. Thank you for joining us, and I'm sure we'll be hearing from you soon.
All right.
Absolutely. Thanks all.
Thank you.
Nice evening.
Thanks for your work. So next on our agenda is discussion, and we have only one discussion item, and that is the following meeting agenda. Our next meeting is in two weeks on April twelfth. There are a few things on the agenda right now, and they'll become more populated as we get closer to the twelfth. But do any board members have any questions at this point about our following meeting agenda? Seeing none, we'll continue. And that brings us to the second and final opportunity for audience comments tonight. And before I recap the guidelines, I'm going to ask Kathy, is there anybody wishing to make a comment? Since there is somebody, I'm just going to remind everyone that we ask that you give us your name and your connection to the district. You have three minutes to make your remarks, and we will give you a thirty-second warning. We, please know that we're going to be in listening mode only, so we will not be responding but at tonight. But either the board or the administration will provide an appropriate response in a timely matter manner. And we ask that you conduct yourselves with respect and civility. Having said all that, Kathy, can you tell us who would like to speak to us tonight? Yes, it is Michael Tarkowski, a parent of D thirty-four students, and I'm going to bring him on board here. All right, Michael is here.
Hey there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Michael Turkowski, and I'm a current of the Hank King first grader. And obviously, I didn't realize what the discussion was going to be. But my question, I guess, is sort of related, because it was dealing with remodeling and construction. I'm curious regarding next week, the children will be returning to school, which I am all in favor of. I'm just curious whether, I can get my note, what was done previously regarding any HVAC systems or the PPE, or is this construction that you guys are discussing, will that be included into what will be remodeling and discussion? Because I'm kind of wondering the wisdom of returning to school, if things have not been in place regarding the HVAC systems or ventilation, if they're just going to be pulled out as they were in T one. Because my child is a special ed student who needs consistency. And although he's been zoomed out, basically after week two, and been able to do some in-class learning, which he's really grateful for, but he does need consistency. So I'm just curious regarding that aspect of making sure that things are prepared for them to come back so that they can hopefully complete T three without having to have their schedules disrupted. So I wasn't sure how the PPE and regarding the COVID was related to the construction that you're discussing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment, Michael. Kathy, is there anybody else tonight? Uh, no, there is not. Let me just check one more time. Nope, that is it for tonight. Okay, thank you. Then that brings us to our final item, and that is other business. Does any board member have any other business to bring before the board tonight? Seeing none, may I have a motion and second to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So move, John Hegi.
Second, Katie Jones. All right, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, and that means that we are adjourned for the evening, and we will be back in two weeks. So thank you very much. Good night.
Go on. Thanks for your time.